2020, I'll call the meeting over, can I get a roll cup please?
Veronica Karl first.
Wayne Miller present. Since this is just a working session, I'll skip the pledge and all the other questions. We just have one item on the agenda tonight, it's a working session for the class of comp study. It was done by the Collins Center and early this year. I know, I believe we voted to accept the.
Yep, the board voted to accept it and to take implementation under advisement.
Okay, so this is where we're at, Don's no longer here, so you sit here first, kind of peek at it. So the idea is to, I think, break it into two parts, the classification piece and the compensation piece, because I think they're, while they are related, a lot of them are union based, if I'm correct. And that was part of the greater union contract discussion a few weeks ago, so, where do you want to start?
Well, for me, I'd go through, I would like to go through the report and ask some questions that I have.
Okay, good.
And I hope you've already done one.
I've read it, I mean, we've had this since May, so I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
Probably since the last time we talked about it.
Some of my questions are going to be, you know, they described the methodology and what they did in the beginning part of the report. So some of my questions are, were triggered by reading this, not questioning their method. But, so first one, under methodology, the second bullet, it said discussion of position description issues. And I, my question was, which, and we don't have to answer them right now, they might not be answerable till we look at the data. Which are any jobs moving from clerical to supervisory or vice versa?
There aren't union distinctions drawn in this document, so you're conflating two different issues, I believe. This plan looks at every position in town irrespective of its union group or non-union status, with the exception of the town administrator position, which is called out to not be part of the copper class plan.
Okay, I will try my questions.
And classifies them against one another. What you're suggesting is a different subject, which is which positions were in one union and were changed to another union.
Well, it's the job description that determines that. This is my understanding. If the job description has supervisory duties, the position would be in the supervisory union. So let's not do union.
Not necessarily.
Where any of the job descriptions change such that the job description that a current employee is operating under changes that job from being one where they have supervisory duties to one where they do not have supervisory duties?
To my recollection, no, nor do I believe there are any in the inverse.
Okay, so that was the, okay. So do we have the current job description, the job descriptions that the employees are operating on right now?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Do we have the job descriptions that the employees are oper- operating under right now? Because what I want to do is line them up one to one and see where the changes are. I've not missed meeting, certainly not missed meeting, but in our next work session.
We do, they were emailed to both Dawn and Wayne in a zip file prior to their vote to accept. I can pull that email up, it has a number of attachments on it, and I can forward it to you as well.
Okay, is it the, it's not the towns and descriptions final, I assume, I have a zip file called towns and descriptions final that you sent me.
That would be those.
Those are the new job descriptions or the old? Because if that's the case, I don't see the old.
Those are final new ones, those are the products presented by.
Okay, I understand that. What I want to know is, what are we operating on right now? What were the job descriptions that the Collins Center looked at to come to after their interviews and et cetera? To come to the ones that are in the zip file?
So you want the old ones, because what we're operating under.
Exactly right, yeah.
Okay, well, that's the first thing here, you asked the question, so that's easy. I can create a zip file tomorrow off of the server, a file that was the then-current job descriptions for everybody prior to this Collins Center report being adopted.
Just out of memory, a lot of the job descriptions look like it was in the seventies?
The current ones.
The old ones.
The prior ones.
What job descriptions are the employees operating under right now?
The Collins Center report as adopted by the board.
So their job descriptions changed in May?
Yes, the board adopted the Collins Center's plan.
Well, I thought you adopted this report on the day, I didn't know that it had been implemented.
The implementation that was kept on hold was the financial implication of actually funding the plan. Specifically, the meeting, the discussion was about the fact that from a budgetary perspective, we didn't know where we were going to be. Therefore, it couldn't be implemented, it was taken under advisement for the implementation of the compensation side of the plan.
So right now, the job descriptions that everybody's operating on are the Collins ones in the final.
That's what I understood.
And how was that rolled out?
They were part of it, they were, I mean, they had an integral part in.
I know they were interviewed and they looked at them.
Interviewed and they reviewed the changes, so they, I believe correctly if I'm wrong, they all saw the final.
Draft descriptions were created and were distributed to incumbents and supervisors upon us? And the final descriptions were pre-overs?
Yeah, I can't remember how many rounds we went through. It was, it was a six-month process.
Yeah, some took more iterations than others.
Okay, so then the old ones are irrelevant for what we're doing here?
Yes, unless you want to see what changed.
I would like to see what changed.
So then they are irrelevant.
All right, yeah, that's good, all right. So then did we adopt, which is what's implemented, did we change the job title, so I'm on page four. There were title changes that were adopted. So the Board of Health Administrator is now the Administrative Assistant for the Board of Health, is that correct?
That's correct. All of the titles were consolidated and made uniform at the recommendation of the consultant. Those titles are the head of the job descriptions that you referred to in the file that have been rolled out. So those are the titles of the positions.
So everybody is operating under these new titles. So when we go and update the website, the titles that we put in are going to be the new titles. So, all right, so there's not going to be a Board of Health Administrator. There will be an Administrative Assistant listed under the Board of Health.
Right.
There will be an Administrative Assistant listed under Conservation. I don't know that I saw.
Actually, I believe it's a Department Assistant under Conservation.
No, it's Administrator, let's look at page four. Bottom D, block D. Do you look at the department on the right, pulled out Conservation?
Administrative Assistant.
Okay, and then there's a Conservation Agent for Conservation. All right.
That did change.
That did not change, correct. And there's no longer a Librarian too, there's a Senior Library Tax for the Children and a Senior Library Tax for the Regular Library. Okay, so all of these title changes were adopted?
Yeah, so they went from very specifically, very generally.
Correct, okay.
Because we're, I think, just again, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of these Administrative Assistants are doing multiple jobs, if you will, or serving additional boards, I forget which one it was, the Land Use.
Land Use, the Administrative Assistant for Land Use, both CPA and. So, okay.
The effort that the Collins Center employed was to have consistency in municipal government generally. So while we had a curious amalgamation of titles, they standardized them.
Right.
Such that there are two basic admin titles, one is Administrative Assistant, which is a senior, more responsible than the lesser Department Assistant.
Correct, which is under proposed grade C. Okay, so that answers my question as far as the website goes, so these are all titles. Okay, my next question was, where is the TI and why wasn't the TI included?
TA contract expressly states, and it has, I believe, since the eighties, that the DA position is not subject to the personal bylaws or the copper class plan.
And I find that in the contract?
You won't, yes.
But it doesn't say it's not subject to.
I believe it does. Can we see that?
Okay. All right, next page.
What is next page?
Six. All right, so my question here is not, is probably not relevant if these titles and et cetera has already been accepted. I'm gonna save this for another time. Just with all the changes, seasonal, interment, and block up. All right, so I'm looking at page seven, the paragraph before development of the salary schedule, where it says, it is important to note that almost, it's middle sentence, it is in that last column. It's important to note that almost all pay rates fall within the market range. When they are referring to all pay rates, are they talking about our current pay?
Well, read the whole paragraph. In almost all instances, the minimum and maximum salaries in towns are below the average and median of the survey communities. It's important to note that almost all pay rates fall within the market range. So, the way I read that is that they're below, but still within the range.
So all of our current pay schedules are within the market range?
Well, I would confirm that by going to the last sentence, which is a summary of the survey analysis, is attached and confirm it through the data. But that's how I would read that sentence.
Yeah, so you're looking at two statistics and then a sandwich of titles and statistics, so if you look at a double bar.
I understand, I just want to make sure that what they're referring to there is the current pay. All right. Fifteen steps, I looked at that and thought, that's an awful lot. It is an awful lot of steps. All right, so my next question is, did we bring non-contract employees? Did we already bring non-contract employees up to the maximum of their grade, meaning the fire chief and the police chief? Has that already been done? Okay, Jake.
No changes to the fire or police chief's contracts have been made since the acceptance of this plan.
I saw, but it did to the fire chiefs.
He didn't have a pay adjustment. It was just a renewal of his contract.
He renewed the contract and in that, there was no pay adjustment, in that the pay did not change?
Correct.
And are they already at the high end?
I do not know, but it's easy enough to calculate. I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Just off of memory, it looks pretty close. Yeah, you know, you've got the spreadsheet here, so. The fire chief is about twelve grand under the max. And the same would hold true for the police chief.
What do you have for the max rate in that?
Sixty-five ninety-seven on both of them.
Points two thousand hours, one hundred thirty-two K?
The formula they use here is times forty times fifty-two point two. The way the fiscal year rolls, some were dead on fifty-two weeks, others were up to four days additional, so the average they use is fifty-two point two.
All right, it's under implementation, the Collins Center recommends employees be placed in the recommended grade at a rate granting them an increase.
Yep, the standard implementation is to put them in the grade at the closest to but higher than step. So if you are making fifteen dollars and at the end of the day, you're moving into this new plan and the steps are fourteen and sixteen dollars, you'd be placed at the sixteen dollar, not the fourteen. So nobody suffers a loss, they go to the closest but highest.
That's how I understand, okay. It's recommended that a market survey be conducted by the town every three to five years. Are we implementing that in the budgeting process for the town?
Well, we're not anywhere near there yet, but this was that. So when I got here, it had last been done, I think, in twelve, so it was very stale. So we worked over the course of a couple of cycles to get a grant to get this done.
This is the second time it's been done since you've been here.
I'm sorry?
This is the second time that it's been done?
No.
No? Are you sure?
First time I did it, it's a whole.
Yeah.
I thought it was around twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
There was an addendum to the report that had been done by HRS in two thousand twelve, done in early twenty fifteen, but it was a very limited review, look at a handful of positions that predated my involvement in town.
Okay, I thought there was one, that the Collins Center report.
This is the only.
All right. Her name? All right, so those are my questions on this report.
So the takeaways, just so I've got them, is to get a copy of the zip file of the old position descriptions that.
No, I thought it was, no, I just thought it was healthy, trying to stay on.
And you were looking to confirm that the titles are in fact the ones that will be used on the website?
Yes.
And then the police and fire chief where they are against that top number, which we just did, so.
Right.
You're getting a bit of some of the language of the positions.
Of the what?
The old ones.
That's good.
Like some of the positions, there's no mention of computer skills.
Of course not.
Because it wasn't a computer.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't a phone.
It's really hard to understand, you guys.
It's on cable.
Sorry, Joe, we'll try to speak a little louder.
Well, yeah, if we're gonna listen to you, at least we gotta hear what's going on.
Can you do it on cable? Does it, have you tried cable channel nine?
No, you guys are just really muffled.
But it is on cable, so.
Okay, all right, we'll try to.
Stuff with the mouth, yeah, pieces.
Yeah, and it's far away from me.
Get a little closer, I'll say.
We'll try to move it closer to us, so then maybe, but can you see us now?
I can hear you better. I can't see Wayne now.
Can't see Wayne.
You don't need to see me, I'm right here. I'd get closer, but that's going to violate their six feet.
Hey, I'm covered negative, so.
I mean, just as long as we can hear you is kind of important.
All right, thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
All right, what next? Okay, I mean, the next part is obviously the getting to the cop piece of it, which for, with the state and government not getting us our budget to be finalized yet, we can't really make a plan to implement.
Right, the one thing that Veronica hasn't had the benefit of, that you and Dawn did, is a discussion about the implementation costs. So there is a implementation tab on a spreadsheet that the Collins Center prepared, Veronica, that if you put everybody in the closest to but higher than, the implementation for the non-public safety comes in at just over sixty-seven thousand dollars. And the, for the public safety comes in, just so I have nine thousand dollars, so about seventy-five, nine, so call it seventy-six thousand, all in bringing people to the closest to but higher than. In doing that, some people see a significant adjustment.
Correct.
And other people see little to no adjustment. So while that takes care of the implementation and bringing the market to the positions, it's a separate discussion from what takes place from a collective bargaining process, because they're looking collectively for everybody to see something.
Well, there aren't many that aren't, didn't see anything. I mean, it's small, some of them are small.
Yeah, it's pretty spread out.
The highway superintendent is zero, I believe. Is that the superintendent?
Laborer, two cents, parks assistant, five cents.
Yeah, there's some.
So there are some that are relative.
Oh, you're talking about per hour?
Right.
You're looking at the difference, I'm looking at the annual, so.
Three cents, no cents.
That's on the per hour.
Correct.
I think the only person that was zero was Harley.
No, fleet mechanic, pen cameraman.
Cemetery laborer?
Yeah, they're there.
All right, but very few.
How many employees do we have?
General Government, thirty, forty, I'd say.
Can I bring that whole?
Depending on who we've got, what positions are dealt.
Okay, and when you added that increase, did you take out the positions that we don't have, like land use coordinator? The ones that we didn't fund?
No, nothing, nothing has been done on this spreadsheet since the board's last discussion, which was pending the resolution of the fiscal twenty-one budget.
Okay, so. All right, so what's our, our plan for implementation? Do we have a timeline, a window? I mean, I understand the budget coming from the state, but we can also work, I mean, you have to take shots at it, you can't just say, oh, we're gonna wait to do anything until, you know, we get a final number. We should be able to adjust once the final number is given.
Adjust, well, I guess. The, the simple statement that I could offer is, it's a zero-sum game. There are a fixed number of dollars available that are currently, at best case, all accounted for with no implementation of this plan. So if what we expect to happen happens, the governor's number is the number, and the House and Senate finish, we're right dollar for dollar online there. If our local receipts that we projected come in as we projected, which we're trending slightly under, we're still, we're what we planned on being when we built the budget, which is jobs are preserved, but salaries are not adjusted. Yes, so if the board's wishes to increase salaries, something someplace else will need to go.
So do we have the option of decreasing salaries?
Well, it would depend. It would depend what you're thinking.
On contract, on contract employees?
Not without agreement of the employees now, I mean, that's the purpose.
So it's both the union and the contract, they're written and signed, so you have to negotiate.
But I thought there were, that there were clauses in there, again, I'd have to look at them. But there's a clause that you can reduce the salary if it's across the board for all contract employees?
I think you're referring to some language that says, if there's going to be a reduction, it has to be made across the board to everybody. But that doesn't give the right, once a contract has been funded, to make any changes to it. So for instance, if a union contract, a three-year contract, is appropriated and funded year one, the town is obligated to fund it at that same level for year two and year three. The only way to change the economic impact is to reduce things, positions, but not the rate that those things or positions cost, because that contract has been done.
All right, so, one good thinking option?
The way I see it is that we're six months into the year already. So, and we still don't know what the budget is, so my thinking is this, more or less, is going to get pushed to the next budget cycle for twenty, it's twenty twenty-two. For this upcoming year, because we just started that, right? So if they're level funded, and hopefully we get dollar for dollar.
We work with what we did in July.
Yes, and there's no changes to that, if you get lucky, maybe it's more, maybe we can do something, but I know finding seventy-five thousand dollars is going to be very difficult without cutting something.
The bigger, the bigger issue that has been hounding us over the past thirty years is the, the simple fact that we generate slightly north of five hundred thousand dollars of new revenue every year. In property taxes with Prop two and a half, each year, we see maybe five fifty. The last four budgets, the school assessment has increased by more than five hundred thousand each year. That's not to say that that's not a valid number for the schools and it's not necessary to provide education. I'm not disputing that, because I wouldn't substitute my judgment for the superintendent, it's just not my skill set. However, to continue to take every new dollar we get and put it on that budget, leaving our budget with fixed cost increases like retirement and, you know, insurances, continues to put the squeeze on other discretionary things that you have the ability to say yes or no to, primarily that's salaries. Because in a general government budget, like, seventy, you know, percent of, of your expenditures are on, on wages and benefits, so.
How did we find the money to pay off the police chief then? I mean, if we need seventy-five thousand dollars to implement this, but we were able to find a hundred fifty thousand, how did we do that?
Excellent question. The, the calculus of the board at the time, having made that decision, was that this is a one-time cost. There's a, there's a, there's a contract settlement, it costs this much money, then once it's paid, it's done. It's not a recurrent cost, so the thinking was to use one-time revenues for that one-time cost. So free cash, which exists today, may or may not ever exist again, you don't know. So you don't use free cash to fund recurring expenditures, but you can use it for one-time things. So that's where, that was, that's what the thinking was there, is it's a one-time cost, use one-time revenues. It was bled out over three years to try to lessen the impact. But unlike salaries for heat and lights, you know, in your own household, you, you would strive to not pay your, your gas and light bill from your savings account, because potentially the savings are gone and the bill is still there. are gone and the bill is still there. So when you're talking about recurring expenses like salaries, it's, it's anathema to consider using one-time revenues like free cash or stabilization.
We have other contracts that have been signed that have severance clauses in them. Are we getting those monies from the same place, from free cash?
You would, you would need to deal with that, given when those clauses ever came to pass.
Yeah, we'd have to find the money, basically.
So we're able to find money, but we can't find money to pay foreign employees?
You're, you're talking again, and I'm not being clear, obviously, you're talking about two different types.
I, I understand the two different types.
But then when you make a statement that we can find it for that but not for this, you don't appear to understand that a severance is a one-time bill. So you can use one-time revenue to pay a severance, because that bill is paid and it's gone, whereas.
But we're able to do that three years in a row at $55,000. I don't know, I'm, um.
We keep some contracts with clauses.
I think we need to go further into the budgeting process and see where we can find money.
I look forward to that.
To implement things, so.
I, I greatly look forward to.
Because I think we have contracts that are gonna cost us a lot of money, and we don't have the money for it.
Well, they only cost you a lot of money, Veronica, if things occur that trigger expense items, and if those things don't occur, then those bills don't come.
Correct.
Well, then, but.
You make it hard for them not to occur, Reidler.
Now, I have a question, Wayne. If, if we are going to take and find all this money, and I have been paying attention to this for a long time, and I hope maybe soon we can come to a better resolution to where we're gonna go with this. Town Hall in the town of Townsend is no different than running a corporation or a business. If we don't take care of our employees, we lose them. And I will say, what I have seen and I have witnessed in the past several years is an atrocity to the employees of this town. If we can keep finding money to pay all these ridiculous contracts, we need to find the money to take care of the employees.
Here, here.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Okay, so.
I have one more question.
That was a question, that was a statement first, Joe, what, what, what is it?
Uh, just quick question. Now, and I've been talking with different people, finance committees and stuff. Now, the finance committee has, what, a $50,000 budget in case something was to ever happen that they could kind of budget that? So what has been happening to that $50,000 that they have for budget if they're not using it? What are they doing with that? Where is that money going?
Mr. Chairman. Joe, to your question, each year it goes to different places depending on the need. So in the time that I've been here, we had two years running where the majority of that reserve fund went to veterans' benefits. So you had years where the economy was, was tanking, and veterans that have benefits available to them but hadn't necessarily been looking for them, began to look for them. So those numbers shot up. I think you'll see that in seventeen and eighteen's budget. I think there was a, a capital issue where we had a piece of equipment that wasn't planned to, to, to break, and the finance committee's reserve was, was sought for that. But all of those dollars are accounted for by votes of the committee, and each vote is backed up by a written form request by the department with the request in detail by dollar amount and by need, and then signed by the committee, the finance committee, after they voted. So not only would there be minutes of all those dollars being dispersed, but there would be backup forms too.
Okay, and I know this is maybe off topic, but, and, and sitting in all those town meetings, it, it's, it's just, we move money from how many accounts? Every single thing, we're gonna move it from here to there. How, i- if we're moving all that money around, I, I, I'm just baffled, I'm just, you know, why can't the town of Townsend take care of the employees of their communities? They are the lifeblood of that town hall, and if we keep losing them, and I hope I, I, I end up sitting there someday, so I have a little more input, but that's just not right.
Joe, Joe, let me stop you. First of all, and I, if you had said in some of the meetings that were executive session or with the, even the union a couple of weeks ago. First of things first, we did everything we could to keep and fund all the employees that we have this year without layoffs, so I, that was job number one this year, because it was a mess. Two, I wanna get this comp and class plan in place, I wanna see how to do that. Right now, we can't do it just because our budget is not set, we can't, it's physically impossible for us to add any money to it when we don't want to work yet. And two, the, the budget piece that we're looking at for next fiscal year is going to be looking at funding this somehow. So that $60,000 that the finance committee has may not be there.
So it, it, I, I think that we should set a goal of, of funding this.
I have two goals, I have two goals. One, no layoffs, and two, finding a way to get this done.
So, yeah, we can do that. I mean, there are positions that are not filled, I believe, that we could, just say we're not gonna do that.
But those dollars are all, oh, you mean the ones that are funded but not filled?
Correct.
Because we have others that are not funded.
Not funded, I understand that, I'm talking about the ones that are funded and not filled. If we manage this year without them, then those are our quote-unquote layoffs.
Correct, that's what I wanna do.
And then we go ahead and fund the people that we have.
That's my goal.
So, okay, so we have that same goal, we agree on the goals. So that should be our, we should be doing that in the budget.
And, and the budget is your biggest policy tool, bar none.
I think we also have to look at people that are in these positions, and the number of years that they've been in the positions, and where that falls out, because you might have someone who is, has been in a position for 15 years, making the same amount as someone who's been in the position for two years. So we have to look at that and see, I mean, this is pretty, what's in here is pretty much flat, you know, it applies to everybody. I think we also have to look at the individual and make sure that people that have been in a position for a certain number of years are, that it's like this, as opposed to like this, as far as pay goes. Based on time and position, with the changes and the things that are happening.
The, the union contracts, which again, ninety, more than ninety percent of the positions we're talking about in the general government and unionized positions, they have within their contracts longevity payment that gets at time and service. Prior boards have taken the position that you shouldn't get a financial reward necessarily for the fact that you have been able to sit, show up for 15 years. The, the value for the position in the marketplace is X, and there are steps in the plan, as you said, you noted fifteen steps. Each year pursuant to the union contract language and funding, you go a step, so you're getting years recognized that way. But there is an argument, and it might be the one you're making, I don't know, that says, when we implement this plan and you get, putting the plan at the closest two but higher than step, there could be people that have been here a year and people that have been here 20 years that end up at step six, and the person who's been here 20 says, that's not fair. But it is.
But it's not.
Well, that, that's a different perspective than prior boards have had, so it'll be important to.
I, I think we have to look at, we have to look at that, we have to look at it individually.
That's fine.
So, yeah, so it could change the, change those numbers that we want to. So, um.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's probably, I don't know. I mean, what else is on your agenda?
Nothing, I, I think it was just for you to get, uh, look at this and discuss it, because we haven't talked about it yet, and this was our opportunity to start with that, and the next step is obviously the budget, budgets, I should say.
With the goal of implementing this, but we do need to, I think we need another work session, I wanna look at the, the old versus the current.
You can go ahead and do that, and, and we'll set a date to that.
And we'll set it, exactly. And then I wanna look at it with, I wanna see pay numbers, scale.
And hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a budget.
And, and years of service, that sort of thing. Does longevity go away with step increases, if the step increase takes care of it?
It doesn't now.
Pardon me?
It does not now, they both happen now.
But with the, the step increases and also any cost of living that is negotiated with the, with the union, does the longevity piece go away?
It does not now, right now.
Hannah?
If we negotiated out of the, the contract, the union contract, then that.
So longevity is part of the union contract, even though it wasn't, we didn't have unions necessarily until a few years ago?
It, well, you've had, you've had some unions for a long time, but even those that weren't unionized, the personnel policies and procedures, which were adopted originally, I believe in 2003, and approved by all elected boards, provides a longevity provision. So even though you might not have had union employees in '03 across the board, that benefit has existed since at least then.
And did we have a step system in place?
I don't recall as far back as that.
Okay, so if there's no step system in place and people are just getting, you know, whatever cost of living, then, yeah, the longevity could account, could cover that, but I, to me, a step increase is kind of like a longevity piece.
Kind of the same.
They're kind of the same thing, so we're double paying with longevity.
That's in my position, I'm a longevity piece of it.
Ah, okay, good. So we need to look at that, because we would want to take into account that longevity piece, that is actually part of people's salary, and that needs to be looked at when we look at the numbers. So we should be able, do we have a spreadsheet for, with each employee, their longevity percentage there, because you should be able to do this mathematically.
You, you can, and there is a cost out sheet for employees by human, and we haven't had a change on base since '19, so I think it's probably still fresh, but yeah. Longevity is not by a percentage, longevity is, just so you know, it's, it's a dollar amount at year five, and it grows each year thereafter.
Okay, so you can take that into account in determining what step they wind up with, or where they wind up in the pay matrix, because the longevity is part of their salary. And so you have to, you have to factor that in when you figure out each person's hourly rate and where they go. You can't just say, we're gonna slot this person in here. If you do that, you're gonna wind up with that imbalance based on years of service. This person came in higher, this person came in lower, they have a lower pay rate, but they get this longevity, which actually could bring them up to here if we took the longevity into account, or even here, and, and puts them in a higher spot. Do you see what I'm saying on this?
I can do, the only thing, uh, uh, I don't know that you mean to do.
Well, I'm just doing math because I can't.
But that has real meaning in terms of the comp plan, I just wanna make certain that we're, we're on the same page, because if, if it's, if it's a person and they're getting more money, they're moving, they're moving horizontally versus in responsibility.
Correct, yeah, I understand that, but I just think we need to do a little math here. You can do it with a formula, you can do it with a formula, plug those numbers in, figure out what the actual per, per hour rate is for each person, and put them in at that per hour rate, a little above, and then start the steps and remove the longevity.
One contract, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it was the fire contract, I, I can find out easily, I think one of the negotiations was to do away with longevity, roll it into the base, and be done with it, so that very thing took place.
But you don't need, you need the longevity if you're doing an hourly and giving cost of increases on an hourly, otherwise you're not, because you bring people in at the, oh, the hourly rate now is this, and then the person who's been there a long time gets their longevity, which makes them earn more than this person. If you're doing a step system, you don't need that, but you do have to factor in the longevity in the hourly rate of the individual employee before you place them in the step system. So then that longevity comes automatically within this, you know, within the step increase.
And it grows exponentially each year by whatever coal is applied, as opposed to being a fixed number.
Right.
Yeah, so that's the, and we can do that, we can do the math, and we should do the math.
Good.
So, and that's, and then that will require a change in the personnel policies and procedures manual.
Actually, the personnel policies and procedures manual applies to, I believe, two employees townwide right now, because with the exception of the executive assistant and the selectman town administrator's office, and the executive assistants of the police chief, both of which are deemed confidential and can't be unionized, everybody else is either in a union or under a personal services contract, which means the benefits in, in the old personnel policies don't have any, any applicability, because benefits caught by it in the contract.
So where is the longevity written?
Right now in the contracts.
In the union contract?
Yeah, so if.
Then we should have been at that union, we shouldn't have been there.
There was no union, we shouldn't have.
Yeah, we can't talk about that now.
Okay, so in any of them, so it has to come out of the union contract?
Anything we put in or take out has to be negotiated, so.
So then what I was just talking about, fitting it in with the staff, needs to be negotiated with the union, is that correct?
First. Yeah. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I know that we adjourn on six, it's 5:55.
Uh, I'll suck it, all those in favor? We know, yes, thank you, everybody.